Council meeting is now in session. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, great. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Ring?
Here.
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Bahi?
Here.
Councilmember Pringle?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
All right, everyone's present, thank you. We will continue on with public comments and as a reminder, it's a five, we do a five-minute window for you to stand up and address council. So if there's something you would like to address, certainly can do so. And I'm going to start over here with Delbert. Delbert, is there anything?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Tina? Lowell?
I already spoke to Travis earlier today. I just, for the, how much grant money is left over from the park? And how much are we spending out of pocket for the playground? Well, the playground that's coming in, I think it's around $105,000? And it's 100% match for the grant?
It's 50% match on the equipment, not the installation. We're getting, I think it was $10,000 for the nature works grant.
So that we're coming up with another, what, $42,000 out of pocket?
So, no, it's 105 out of 5. The grant is in addition to that.
So we're paying 105. And then on top of that, in speaking with DWA today, they said that every step that they do is supposed to be ADA compliant and not wait till the very end. Your first playground's still not ADA compliant, as I spoke to you earlier.
Yeah, he called me and told me that he talked to you.
Yeah.
And the equipment is ADA compliant.
Not the playground, is what I'm saying. And it's supposed to be ADA compliant. You have to have a ramp to get into there since you have, what, about an eight-to-10-inch drop? And then you're saying the other one's going to be built this summer that's coming up? And then you're going to wait another year after that in order to have the money to do the ADA compliant? Everything that you build is supposed to be ADA compliant when you're finished, not through steps. And whenever I spoke to them, they also says when they do steps, and if they build the playground from top to bottom, you know, concrete, everything from top to bottom, each playground that they do has to meet ADA compliant when they're done. On first phase, second phase, that second phase has to meet ADA compliant. I'm very stickler on, for handicap people. And I don't know if y'all know, my father was paralyzed back in 1968. So I've been around it. I personally don't like the mulch being as an ADA compliant, even though it is. But a handicap person is going to have a hard time. Wheelchairs can't go through mulch very well. I guarantee if I go up there tomorrow, stick a roller down in there and dig the little hole and see how deep, compacted depth of mulch is supposed to be, 12 inches. I bet you it's not going to be 12 inches. Then get past that, did you bid this out for this playground equipment? It was put out for bid?
Well, no, we haven't gone into construction yet. We've purchased the equipment.
Okay, I was just seeing you were signing contracts today. You know, bidding on the contract. It has to go out to bid, correct? Because it's over, state requires at least 70,000, anything over 70,000 is supposed to go. You guys can lower the standard. But if we're spending 105,000, that means it's over that, so it needs to go out to bid. Just, I'm speeding through some stuff here to get quick sidewalks. I know it's been years that we've been debating about sidewalks. Who owns it, who's responsible for it? According to the state guidelines, sidewalks are, you know, the village is, is a residence, which sucks. I don't think that's right because village makes you put the sidewalks in. Residents shouldn't have to. But since it is there and that's the way it is, the sidewalks need to be fixed. And there should be a, not a resolution, what's it called? You could do a special assessment for 20 years. That ain't going to really ding any homeowners for their taxes to pay for this. Somebody's going to get hurt there. There's too many people in wheelchairs going up and down these streets. And they're going to wind up getting hit by a car. Going through town and even out here, if you go down UDF, those sidewalks, up around UDF has handicap entrance and exit. Going that way towards the fairground, none of them. The gentleman that's across from the fairground road where the, what was that? The animal place used to be right there? He has to drive in the road in order to get up here to UDF. And I'm seeing that all over. If a sidewalk is accessible, they're required, even as pedestrians, are required by law to use a sidewalk. If the sidewalk's not accessible or dangerous, they can't use it. So now you're putting them into traffic. And half these people don't know, you know, they're a pedestrian at the time. They have to go against traffic instead of with traffic. Bicycles go with traffic. And then these fiber optics, who's the fiber optic going through? Is this going to be available for, is that cable? Are they able to watch TV? Is this another network that is going to be offered out here? Or is it still the same cable company that's, you know, is it Spectrum that's out here? Or is it somebody else that's running these new fiber optics?
Alta Fiber, that's it.
Alta Fiber.
Yeah, we have Alta Fiber, Spectrum, and Frontier all currently running through town.
Right, and then?
It's not a government project.
And then how long is that supposed to be before it's going to be available? Do you, does anybody know?
I mean, that's up to them.
Okay, and then the poles that they're using? I know the one at?
Get about 30 seconds.
The one at Harold's collapsed because of the weight of the fiber optics that was on there. The one on the corner of my road's starting to lean.
That's not billable.
Which one, one down there at my house or, whose pole is it?
It must have been the sp-
It used to have a street light on it. And you guys cut the street light out and put it over.
Thank you, Mr. Gilliam. All right, Mr. Keith? Our new 2026 council member, welcome. Anything to address the group?
I just want to say hello, good evening, and thank you Georgetown for all your votes. And I'm ready to work with the rest of the members and work for the community.
Thank you, Jay.
Other than that, I'm just glad to be here.
Thank you. All right, so that ends our public comments. We will move on to general business. Item A on your agenda is page two, the regular session meeting minutes from October 23rd. Again, that's page two. Take a look at those. If there are any edits, please advise. If not, we will entertain a motion when ready.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Mays has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bahi. Greg, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Page five, we have an ordinance to review here. And Councilmember Campbell, can you read that by title?
Sure. An ordinance authorizing the fiscal officer to create a police fund.
All right, thank you. We talked about this last month. We are creating essentially a police budget on their own. As many of you know, they've operated out of the general fund. And this way, it really helps everybody to stay on track with budgets. And Sean's able to kind of plan and work forward with things. So Travis, anything additional to add there?
Uh, no, that's pretty much it. This will just allow him to, you know, see year-over-year carryover for funds that he manages well. You know, maybe he wants to build up certain sub-fund for a certain purpose that is multi-year, and this will allow him to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Mays has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ring. Greg, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, thank you.
That will be ordinance number 1406.
Ordinance number 1406? Again, 1406. Perfect, thank you. Item C on your agenda, page six, we have another resolution. Councilmember Campbell, can you read this by title?
Resolution approving the agreement with Jacqueline M. O'Hara to serve as magistrate for the Village of Georgetown Mayor's Court.
Sure, Joe.
Just so you know why we're doing that, because we recently hired another magistrate a few months ago. The current magistrate will no longer be able to serve effective December 2nd because he'll have a conflict. He currently works for the Claremont County Prosecutor's Office. He's going into private practice and he's actually going to work at our firm. So our firm can't serve as the magistrate and prosecutor. That would obviously be a conflict. So as excited as we are that David's joining our firm, he'll lose that position. Jackie is a prosecutor, it's Claremont County Prosecutor's Office. She also has some ties to Georgetown. She came highly recommended by some folks here in Georgetown. And so she's going to serve as our magistrate. She currently is the fill-in and has been for some time. And I understand she also did with Val at times. So the other thing I would point out about this and with our agreement, which is the next item on your agenda, even though there are agreements for a set period of time, they're all at-will agreements, which means at any time, if either party's unhappy, they can be sever. Because you don't want to have someone working in either of these roles if they're unhappy or you're unhappy. So they're both terminable at-will and the exact same terms for her that we had for David.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. If not, when ready, we could entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Bahi has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Jones. Greg, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and that's resolution number?
1419.
1419. All right, thank you. Item D on your agenda, page 10, we have another resolution. And so if you can, Councilmember Campbell, please read this by title. Page 10.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Joseph J. Braun and the law firm of Strauss Troy, CO-LPA, to serve as a village solicitor for the Village of Georgetown, Ohio.
All right, and this is a renewal of our solicitor's contract. Joe does a good job for us, for the village. And certainly, we do this every year.
Every two years.
Every two years?
But it is a terminable at-will agreement, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Councilmember Mays has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? If not, Greg, roll call, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, resolution passes, that is number?
1420.
1420. Joe, it looks like you're back on the team for another two years.
Thank you very much, as long as you want me.
All right. Let's see, we are on item E, and that is on page 14. It looks like we have another resolution. Councilmember Campbell, when ready, could read it by title?
Yeah. Resolution authorizing administrator to enter into an agreement to purchase the playground equipment from Game Time slash DWA Recreation, Inc.
All right, and this is our, so as you guys know, we have a three-year plan here to expand upon the equipment at the park. We did the first-year phase this past summer, is that right?
True.
Next phase is going to be next summer, but we've got to get our equipment ordered because it's the time of year where they offer the grants to make it happen. As you guys know, we have plenty of people that really want to see us upgrade that park, and we really want to make it happen. So that's what we're working to do here. And I know Travis, you put some information in here about it. Do you want to talk more with the group?
See, yeah, this is, again, we talked about last, last meeting, but this is the toddler version and also have a swing set. So this will be the second and three phases. The third phase will connect the two together and have a seating area between for the adults to sit and watch and keep an eye on the kids as they play.
Also, there was a question about bidding. There are what are called state purchasing consortiums where they make prices available to state entities and they bid those for the state. And as you can see, they also indicate on there that's included prevailing wage. So we'll confirm that, but it's our understanding that that covers us on this because it was through a consortium.
Yeah, I just checked.
Okay. Yeah, so in that, their bid at one time for anyone in the state, but they're only for a short period of time. And then entities like us can purchase them for that. And they have to honor that price for that period of time. So that's how that works.
Fantastic. Any additional questions? All right, there is a motion that needs to be made. That can happen at any point.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Jones has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Campbell, thank you. Greg, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and that's resolution number?
1421.
1421. Thank you. All right, item F, we have an ordinance here on page 16. Councilmember Campbell, if you could read that one by title?
An ordinance making appropriations for the current expenses and the other expenditures of the Village of Georgetown, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026.
All right, and Greg, if you want to give us a little more detail, or Travis?
Yeah, so this is just the first reading. Greg and I, well, Greg mostly, but because they're working hard to get this ready for tonight. Just note that what was in the packet, there was a column missing. So I gave you an updated printout that has all the columns. Greg and I were more than happy to sit down with each of you between now and next month to go through these. And then also, we can answer and follow the questions next month as you've had time to review them. Keep in mind, a couple of things will change. Payroll, as we, as we work to have payroll for next year ready for your approval next month, that will affect these a little bit. Also, health insurance, we are renewing tonight. We don't have the final numbers on that, but that will change the benefits lines. So those will change. Otherwise, we may have some tweaks, but overall, it's pretty well ready for temporary appropriations for next, next year. The version you'll see next month will be the official UAN report, not the spreadsheet, but this makes it easier for you to compare past years up to what's going to be for next year, so. Greg, do you have anything in addition?
No, I think you've pretty well covered it.
All right, so that was the first reading. Are there any questions? All right. If you have any questions, you know, in between now and next month's meeting, certainly, if you reach out to Travis and/or Gray. All right, that was item F. Let's move on to item G, and that's another ordinance for a supplemental appropriation. Councilmember Campbell, can you read that by title on page 26?
An ordinance making a supplemental appropriation for the Village of Georgetown, Brown County, Ohio.
All right, folks, and it's not time of year. It's crunch time, getting down to the last little bit of the year. So sometimes things have to be moved in between columns, if you will. Greg, any additional detail here?
No, like you said, we're just making sure we're kind of covered going into the end of the year. You know, a couple of them, I'm sure the electric dents out. You know, we've seen increases due to the end of the year. And just want to make sure we don't get into December and have a cold month and, you know, come up short on that. Other than that, we're just managing just general items.
We just want to make sure we have enough padding there that we don't have to have a special meeting. So we're trying to add to any, you know, some of the contractual services lines that might come up before, that have a due date before the beginning of next year. That's why we're bumping up a lot of the contractual services. You know, as Greg said, the electric bill is pretty tight with what we have left appropriated. So keep in mind, we're raising that, but if that bill is higher than what we have in place, that means we're billing for more, so there's more revenue coming in. We just have to appropriate it to be able to pay it.
So all these figures were already pre-appropriated at the beginning, at the end of 24?
No, these are, we're just adding a little bit to make sure we have enough. So, you know, and you weren't here for that, but we said this time last year that we made them tight because that was my first go. Greg was new. We expected to be adding as we went through the year, but we wanted it to be tight so that you would be aware when we were bumping them up.
Can I just get clarity? What is other contractual services? There's a lot of them.
Yeah, so each line item, like, you know, like utility software, that might be based on multiple items. Anything where we're signing a contract for a year. A lot of our, a lot of our departments have contracts for services, you know, or mayor's court billing, or mayor's court software, tax, tax, our tax software. Just contracts that we sign for contractual service.
Other questions? All right, if not, we could certainly entertain a motion when ready.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Mays has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Campbell. Greg, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and that's ordinance number?
1407.
1407. All right, thank you. We do have one additional add-on. It's a resolution that was put in front of you tonight. And Councilmember Campbell, if you could read that by title?
Sure. Resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter an agreement with Bell to be the insurance to provide health insurance for the village employees.
All right, Travis, a little more clarity here?
Yeah, so it's that time of year, you know, we can't really negotiate for insurance until October, November 1st. And we try to, we try our best to get it for those council meetings so we don't have to have a special meeting. We'll put it off until December. So we actually got these numbers today. We had been told by USI, who we used last year to expect a 10% to 15% increase. So we started looking around. This is actually a local company. She's out of Georgetown. She's really, she's been doing, doing great for a lot of organizations. Adams County Medical, you know, they just saw a big reduction in their insurance rates. We're looking at a savings of between $65,000 on the conservative side versus this year. So we're going to see, this is the second year we'll actually see a drop in our cost of insurance, which is pretty unheard of, you know. So I didn't expect that we'd be able to do it again this year, but I'm happy to say that we are. It's actually going to be a better product for the employees. Instead of having $5,000, $10,000 deductible, it'll be $3,000, $6,000. And we're going to save money, so. The nice thing about this is kind of new for us. We're able to, instead of everybody having the exact same plan, she sits down and it's kind of a mod, it's kind of modified between a group plan and an individual plan. So, you know, she may find that my medical details would align with Anthem, but another employee may align with a different. So it's going to be, each employee will get the best care based on their needs. And it will save us money. So it's pretty enter, it seems to be working for a lot. So I know that the county's going to be looking at it next year as well, so. So I'm pretty excited that we're able to do this. And, you know, just top it off, it's a local, it's a local person, so.
Any additional questions? If not, when ready, we can entertain a motion.
Just got a question because it wasn't on there.
Yes.
You did say you guys are going to be saving, it's not going to cost us any more money, correct? As in taxpayers for this?
No, we're saving money for, for the village, yes. Yes. Thank you.
I'd like to hit on that real quick. So just for example, Brown County's, the county's went up 17%. So this is pretty awesome to be, pretty much saving 17%.
Right, and that's why I always wanted to make sure on, because last year, I probably, you know, there's other alternatives, but if you're saving money, I'm happy with that, folks. Somewhere down the road, if it starts going up, the employees need to start contributing a little. You understand what I'm saying? And that's what I'm looking at. If you're saving money and it's staying the same, it's good, I mean.
Yes, definitely, definitely. All right, any other discussion up here? If not, when ready, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Campbell has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Jones. Greg, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Bahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and that is resolution number?
1422.
1422. Thank you, guys. All right, on page 27, you're going to see your fiscal report. We're fortunate to have Greg here tonight, so if you have any questions on that, feel free to ask. You'll see your payment listing starting on page 29. Again, any questions? Feel free to ask. And then you've got your appropriation status. I like seeing that. I think that's been good for all of us, kind of a quick update of where things are. So that's in there too as well. And then you're going to go all the way up to page 68, I believe it is, and that's your mayor's court. Mayor's court has been hopping, right, Keith? It's been hopping, just say yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, it's been busy. Just say yes, just agree. Agree on that one. So you've got mayor's court in there on page 68. And then page 70, you do have a report from our zoning officer. All right. If there are no questions, and if there are questions ever or after the meeting, you certainly can reach out to Travis and/or Gray. Ideally Travis first, Greg stays very busy, so I kind of like to keep him sheltered so he can keep working on things. But if there are any questions, certainly reach out to Travis.
I have a question right now.
Sure.
Is there any equipment that we're trying to work on? For example, I saw John Deere credit in there for financing. Are we looking for anything next year?
Yeah, for next year, you know, we had a couple of trucks that we got last year. So I think there's, we're looking at a small truck for the water department. And then we're looking at a piece of machinery for electric. And then we're looking at a piece of machinery for electric. We're in need of, it's a small, it's kind of like a boom truck, deer-dairic, but it's on tracks, and it's small that we can fit between yards for easements that, where we have, we have electric lines that run between the backs of properties where we can't get to them. And to maintain those to allow us to do much quicker repair in a winter storm or something like that, this will allow us to do that. So it's been something that we've been planning for a couple of years to add that on into the budget.
No question. Any additional questions? All right, it looks like we do have an executive session on our agenda tonight. And we would just need somebody to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Read it.
In pursuant to higher vice code section one-two-one dash, or point-two-two-G-two to discuss the sale of property.
All right, Councilmember Campbell has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Jones. Greg, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mace?
Yes.
Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
Councilmember Pringle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we want to bring our newest council member in on this? It will be something that will be impacting us next year as well.
Yes.[1768.05]